Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Here.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Here.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Form is present.
We are joined today for the pledge of allegiance by one of the Buffalo Public School students from the Olmstead School who actually has a letter that is filed with council that council will be considering. In just a few minutes, we will be led by the pledge of, into the pledge of allegiance by Makai Edwards. Makai?
Here, hi.
You can start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Makai. And we understand that you are a great student over at Olmstead, and we really appreciate you taking the time to do the pledge of allegiance today. Our invocation will be led by the Reverend Dr. Al Warner, who has a special guest with us today. Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Council President. It's a joy to introduce to some of you and reintroduce to others my long-term friend Pastor Bill Clark, New Bethel Community Church here in Buffalo, New York. He and his wife Toni have walked out of life with Deb and me for a lot of years, and I felt like his voice would be a wonderful one to begin our session together today. Pastor Clark? And you need to.
Thank you, Reverend.
There you go.
Thank you, and to the council president and the council members, if you would bow with me in prayer. Father, we do give you glory and honor. We thank you today for your grace and your mercies. Thank you for your hand powerfully and richly resting upon our city. We ask now, Father, that you would bless our president, our council president, and these members as they enter into city business. I pray that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them insight. Father, I pray a special anointing of grace upon our city leaders during this critical time. Lord, I pray even as you taught the disciples to pray in Matthew six and 10, "I pray thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven." Bless our city, Lord. Bless those who dwell herein. We commit these things to you and to your great keeping. We ask these things now in the strong and mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and we all said, amen. Amen. Thank you, Pastor, and thank you many who are on know you, but I know you're all, know you also to be doing other things to help rebuild our city, both spiritually and brick and mortar. So thank you for your contribution to the city of Buffalo. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers, memorials? Councilmember Wingo?
Today, we laid to rest one of the stalwarts in Maston District. Her name was Linda Minifee. She has done so much for the community and for her street over on Stevens. We laid her to rest today at a very high service at True Bethel Baptist Church, and the family and the community all came together to celebrate the life of Linda Minifee. She will be sorely missed. She was the president of the Board of Directors for the Maston Block Club Coalition. She also served as a vice president of the Erie County Board of Block Clubs, as well as the vice president of Rome Block Club, and she also served as an Eastern tire. She was involved in her community as, even as far as making sure that the children on her street and in her community had school supplies every year. So Linda also was a formidable woman. She was a no-nonsense kind of woman, and she would bless you out should you stroke that side of her. And we just thank God that we have such a strong individual in our district and that we have the opportunity to get to know her as well as we did. So she will be sorely missed, and we're hoping that the family continues to stay active like Linda did in the community. And to her husband, our heart goes out to him as well because she was his caretaker. So our sincere heartfelt prayers and condolences are with the family. Thank you.
I echo those thoughts. Councilmembers, any others? All right. Seeing no other, I do have here a list that were already submitted, that was already submitted. Reverend C.C. Cox, Jr., of course, Linda Minifee, and Vernon Blair, who also was funeralized this week. And so we recognize all of those, and of course, our men and women who have given their life for the freedom of our country and the freedom of other countries since we last met. And as we have been adding through this pandemic, we thank God for those frontline workers who every day go to work to keep us alive. We pause for a moment of silence. Thank you, councilmembers, and thank you guests. On a motion by Mr. Revere, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on June 9, 2020 are approved. Councilmembers, you have the late files before you. Are there any objections to the late files? Hearing no objections to any of the late files, we will hear the entire agenda, not taking away your right because we know some items did just come in in the last half an hour, not taking away your right to review those items if you would like. I'm sorry? Is there somebody? All right. I believe we are going from the top.
Item number one, Camille Meets Broadway Market Lease Renewal.
Motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five. Can you scroll down? Yeah, up to five.
All right, second by councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number six, Report to Cell 848 Northland.
I defer to the Maston District Councilmember.
We're going to send that to committee. The proposed property owner want, the person who wants to own the property lives out of town. So we're going to see how that works out. So it's not to committee.
Motion is sent to committee.
Second by councilmember Wingo.
Item number seven, Report to Cell 378 Urban Street.
Motion to approve.
Second by councilmember Gullumbeck.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number eight, Report to Cell 130 Victoria.
Motion to defer the next two items to the Maston District Councilmember.
Yeah, motion would be to just send both of these items, eight and nine, to committee.
Motion to send items eight and nine to committee.
Second by councilmember Wingo.
Item number 10, Annual Audit Plan for Fiscal Year 202021.
Motion to send the finance items 10 and 11.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 12, Certificate of Necessity General Fund Transfer.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by councilmember Noakowski.
Item number 13, Controller Request to Renegotiate Bond Interest Rates.
Motion to send the finance items 13 through 18.
All right, second by councilmember Gullumbeck. And councilmembers, just so that you know, I cannot see everyone when they bring up the agenda. So if you are trying to stop me, it only will allow me to see six at a time. Next item.
Item number 19, Third Extension Agreement for City of Buffalo and Socrata.
Motion to approve items 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27.
Second by councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number 28, Appoint Bridge Operator Engineer.
Motion to send the civil service items 28, 29, and 30.
Second by councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number 31, Approval to Extend Contract with G4S Secure Solutions.
This is a late file.
What's the motion on it? Is there a motion?
Um, we haven't had an opportunity to really review this item. We did have a long discussion yesterday with police department officials regarding the new company or the new firm that's coming in, and we were concerned about a transition period. And. Advice to us. I have, I don't know the length of this. Do we know the length of? This extension?
Just. So, so let me, let me understand what we're doing right now. So we're opening this item for discussion, correct?
Right.
All right, so are you asking, who are you asking that, and who are we joined by?
I don't know if there's anybody from the police department that's.
They are.
They are. Maybe they can speak on this item then, before we go back and forth.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to go to the police department first so that they can speak on the item, and then go to councilmembers. This is not the normal procedure. This would be discussed more with commissioners in a committee meeting. We are receiving this at the last minute, and that is why we are going to allow this discussion because the security of City Hall is important. But I would ask that whoever is speaking from the police department, if you would be concise and explain to us what this contract is about.
Yes, guess counsel, this is Lieutenant Seal Losi from the Buffalo Police Department. I was on the new meeting yesterday with the caucus. The issue we are having is that the new security vendor doesn't, cannot get, it's only a week. They, they, we had told them that it didn't look like it was going to happen July 1st, and that we were gonna get an extension from G4S. Yesterday, we decided that we were gonna go ahead with the new vendor. Unfortunately, logistically, there isn't just enough time to do that. Most of these new security officers are leaving. Other security jobs are unable to give two weeks' notice to their former employers. That seems to be one of the largest sticking points we had. So what the police department is proposing to do and what G4S is willing to do is extend their contract by one month to the 31st of July.
All right, Chair recognizes councilmember Wyatt.
The president, yesterday, we had a conversation with the police department, and I said yesterday, I didn't feel warm and fuzzy about this thing. And it got, gets even more fuzzier with this situation. You're telling me that we're going with an organization that doesn't have the staffing currently? They have to get the staffing, and this is supposed to be a smooth transition? I don't know what happened with GS4, but I am very concerned about this transition. GS4, from what we saw, gave us a packet of information with the status of each individual, supervisors, their background. We've not gotten anything regarded like that for this other company. And so for us to have to extend after we had the lengthy conversation yesterday that we had to make an, do an approval so that they can start on July 1st, and then to hear that they have to get people who are resigning from other jobs to do this, that doesn't get, give me a warm and fuzzy feeling. It's, it's almost like this is a group that supposedly has some experience and expertise, but certainly doesn't have the experience and expertise that was presented to us by GS4. This seems like a new group that's just getting together, and now we're gonna put the safety and security of councilmembers and the public in the new group's hands that seems to, right now, don't seem to have their act together. I'm very concerned, extremely concerned, that we are going from a good situation to a poor situation that could get even worse. So I, along with my colleagues, whatever you guys want. But again, this does not seem to me like we're starting off on the right foot. Thank you.
Councilmember Wingo?
I would like to hear from G4S. They're being asked to extend a contract, and yet they did not apply or respond to the RFP. So I'd like to hear from G4S as to how it is that they never responded to the RFP. I want to know why they didn't respond to the RFP. And I also would like to know, again, too, if this is going, if this contract does end up being with Secure Remedy, is there going to be a transition from one company to the next? And lastly, the information that was compiled, the protocols that were written, and the, the standard operating procedures that were drafted of what G4S learned over these last several years, will, is, is that proprietary information that only G4S has and can keep? I kind of didn't get a clear answer yesterday. I would like an answer. But there is a necessity, though, for all of us to make sure that we do have security, whether the building is vacant or not, or has employees in it or not, to ensure that we do have the building secured. So I'm going to be voting for the extension. But while we're moving through this extension, I would like those concerns addressed. Thank you.
Any response from BPD?
I, I can request that G4S, you know, provide you with this information. I, I, the police department obviously can't compel them to, we've, you know, we've been in touch with Mr. Clint Williams, who did say he had no problem extending this by one month. I don't know if he's in a position to address the other issues that the councilman brought up. He did not share that with us, the reason why they did not respond to the RFP. If, if there's any protocols that they are, they consider proprietary. It's from, from, from the police department standpoint, what they do seems to be what's done at airports, at, at, any other public buildings. Whether we can compel them to share any special knowledge they gained in the last five years, I, I, I can't speak to that, whether they'll be willing to do that. Like you say, I'm not a, not at liberty to say what they're willing to do and what they're willing not to do. We could request it. There, it seems like there will be some protocol changes at City Hall regardless of who was doing it as far as the COVID social distancing. I know we'll be working with, we have been working with Dr. Ihacko regarding getting, I, I, if you've been in the building lately, there are some new lines with six feet apart. I mean, that's, that's brand new to everyone.
Right, and I, I kind of want to stick to what is before us at this point. Councilmember Wingo, did that answer your question, or what would you like?
It did not answer my question, but again, too, this is about the extension. I am for the extension, but I'm, I'm hoping that those questions that I did ask, any concerns of my colleague, will be addressed in the upcoming days, not weeks, but days.
And I can't, I can barely see who is with us from BPD. You're way away. The question of the new company, and I know that's not before us, but one of my colleagues did ask it. Is this a brand new company, or is this somebody with a track record?
This is a, a company out of Maryland that has several federal contracts at federal buildings. They, when we reviewed them, they, they actually answered all parts of the RFP. Unfortunately, the, some of the other vendors that did answer the RFP were incomplete. All things considered, they were our best option. And they have, everything we have asked them to provide as far as paperwork, performance bonds, all that kind of stuff has been answered and sent to us quickly for review. You know, going forward, we, we haven't had any issues with them with this, you know, doing some of this background preparations, I guess, would be the best word for it.
Councilmembers, any other, any other, councilmember Revere? You're still muted, sir.
Thank you very much. During this month of the extension, we'll secure remedy and G4 be getting together to talk about the transition to make sure it, it moves smoothly. At some point, remedy is going to come in, and they're going to have to hit the ground running. I just want to make sure that there's some communication, some interaction between them over the next month to make sure when they do come on board that they're ready to go.
Okay, we'll, we'll ensure that. I believe that they, they have assigned a gentleman to be their liaison for this changeover. And he has, I believe, I don't know if he was with G4S, but he has been escorted through City Hall so he knows the layout of the building and what, what he's gonna need going forward.
Councilmember Revere, is that fine?
Chairman, I think we, we're at this point, I agree with councilmember Ulysses Wingo. This is a one-month extension, and we need to move forward on this. So I would vote to approve at this point.
Okay. Anyone else? So the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second by councilmember Farrelletto. Next item.
Councilmember, we're gonna have to take a vote.
Correct?
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Oh.
Item number 32, Major Cities Chief's Donation.
Motion to approve items 32, 33, 34, and 35.
Second by councilmember Gullumbeck.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item, item number 36, Appoint Senior Staff Supervisor.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by councilmember Wingo.
Item number 37, COVID, COVID Estates Related Easement and Stormwater Facility Maintenance.
Motion to approve items 37, 38, and 39.
Second by councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number 40, Operating Budget 202021.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 41, Request to Approve Revised BMHA Salary Schedule.
This one was sent without recommendation?
Second by councilmember Noah Cost. Councilmember Wyatt has the floor.
Um, motion, my motion to approve.
Motion is to approve.
Yes.
Now to approve. All right, second by councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Protemp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number 42, Liquor License Notice.
Motion to receive and file items 42, 43, 44, 45, and 46.
Second by councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number 47, BPAB Recommendation Letter for June 2020.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by councilmember Farrelletto.
Item number 48, Reports to the Council Concerned Community Police Relations.
Motion to send police oversight.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Council President.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you. Um, you know, I was just thinking about this before the council meeting, and this item, and there's some other items that I think are gonna be sent to our police oversight meeting for Thursday. I'm not sure if the public is aware of all those items and what they are. So I don't know if everyone's comfortable with, but I would recommend that maybe we extend the time period for comment from the public before Thursday's meeting. Because again, if these, these items are just coming through at 2:30, 2:40 today, and we're closing that time period out at 4 o'clock today, that's kind of a short turnaround for some people who are just learning of these items. So I don't know if we could extend that a day or so.
Um, I personally don't have any problem with that, and I think it's wise to do. I, I'm, who would I need, our chief of staff? What would be your recommendation to make sure that we have everything ready for that meeting? Is there a day?
Sir.
Did you hear me?
Yes, sorry about that, Council President, I was on mute. So even though this item, this collection of items was not available until today's meeting, since it did come from the police advisory boards of the council, they have been hosting it online, and we, through our social media, were directing to their website accounts when we noticed that people could make comments on the items. So it has been publicly available, just not through us. However, to the councilmember request on extending the time period, we can. The only consideration would be that we set the cutoff for today so that staff would have all of tomorrow to sort through the many comments being ready for Thursday. But if you would like to extend, we can do that.
Yeah, I, I think that, aren't there some resolutions today that are also being sent to police oversight as well?
Yes, sir, I think you have about.
So those, those are more my, that's more my concern than this, this particular item. I just, this was the first item that popped up that was going to police oversight today. So I just wanted to bring it up as early in the meeting as possible so we can maybe figure it out before the end of the meeting. But I think that we should give the public as much time as possible to, to comment on these new items that have been sent to Thursday's meeting. So I don't know if we can set it for tomorrow at noon or something, because again, if it's only a couple more items, I, I, I'd say that that's enough time for the public to comment. And then they have, the staff would have the rest of the data, accumulate everything, and put it together.
So we put it for tomorrow at noon, and then most of, some of the stuff that's going to police oversight, may, it wouldn't be voted on Thursday. So it was still, if there's something that has to come back before us, there's still some time built in. But tomorrow at noon, would that be adequate?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm open to it anytime, really. I just, I had seen some traffic on social media before this meeting where people were saying, you know, the council is just posting this stuff now, and there's stuff going on at today's meeting. So that was a concern I had. So I just wanted to see if everyone else would be okay with that.
I'm fine with it. Everybody else is. So we'll extend that deadline to tomorrow at noon.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 49, Black Lives Matter.
That could just be sent to, it's sent to the committee. I see it says receive and file. But whatever committee, we're gonna send the renaming of the street so that that's there as a basis.
If you want to send it to CD.
Is that where we're sending the street?
Yeah, I think it's legislation. Yeah, we, we had an original note from your office to go to legislation.
To, let's send that to legislation, and that's simply the letter from the student that requested. Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 50, Council Meeting Special Session Transcript.
Motion to receive items 50 through 54.
Second by councilmember Bowman.
Item number 55, Letter to the Controller.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 56, Civilian Oversight Board Sees Opportunity to Address Police.
Motion is, we have it here, to send to CD.
All right, second by councilmember Wyatt.
Submission List Finance. Submission list, finance committee, item number one, capital debt service fund.
Motion to adopt.
Second by council member Noakowski.
Item number two, cash flow actuals and projected.
Motion to receive and files items two and three.
Second by present Pro temp Scanlon.
Resolutions, item number fifty-seven, support reestablishment of NFTA route twenty-seven.
Motion to adopt.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Adopt items fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine.
Second by council member Fairlau.
Item number sixty, ban on no-knock search warrants.
Motion to adopt.
No, 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 the motion should just be to send the entire thing to legislation. Not asking for the adopt.
Motion to send to legislation.
And we'll, we'll discuss it in legislation. We're still doing some research on this. This was really from a law in another city, but we just want to make sure, we talked to the judges. Want to make sure we talk to police, want to make sure that we look at our state laws. Um, but we did want it to be in the discussion right now, so I'm not asking for any adapting of this. It'll just go to legislation.
You, can you add me to that one?
Add council member Wyatt to that.
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm, council member Wingo.
I'm just, uh, going to say thank you for sending that to the committee so that we can discuss this. I really appreciate that decision.
Yeah, it's, it's the, uh, you know, I said earlier to someone, you know, I'm not ever afraid to look at something and say, how can we do this? Can we do it? Can we do it better? So I appreciate that. Next item.
Item number sixty.
Council president.
Oh, council, uh, member Scanlon.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yesterday's caucus, um, I raised some concerns I have about, um, eliminating no-knock warrants. And, um, you know, the fact that a judge needs to sign off on one and the burden of evidence is very heavy upon. That lays upon the law enforcement agencies very heavy, obviously. Um, they need. Probable cause isn't good enough. You need substantial evidence in order for a judge to sign off on a no-knock warrant. Um, and I would. I would be concerned that we were elim- eliminating some of the discretion that judges have. In addition to that, you know, I talked about, uh, the safety of the officers who are serving the warrant. Um, and them having to knock and what could be taking place on the other side of the door. And in addition to that, the fact that while they're knocking and waiting, there could be destruction of evidence and things of that nature. So, um, I'm, I'm very much against the idea of eliminating no-knock warrants, so. Um, I, I'd like to be recorded in the negative on that resolution.
Okay, that's only, it's just being sent to legislation, but we'll, we'll note your, and just on that note. Um, the, some of the, uh, states or cities that have went to no-knock, it was actually for the protection of police. Uh, because if you bang in somebody, some people's houses. Um, and they don't know who's coming in the door, it can be dangerous. Um, and that's why I said we'll, we'll discuss it in legislation. The one thing about all of the items that have been filed by me. Is that I'm not afraid to have a discussion. I'm not afraid to look at how do we do things better for not just people, but especially for people. Um, our citizens, but also for police. Um, and I know that some of these conversations are uncomfortable. For some people, it feels like it's us against them, and I could. I, I, I go against that thought totally, um, because I think that if there are some laws on the books. In other places that could be helpful in Buffalo, at least let's have the conversation. Um, and it either goes forward or it doesn't. I think the most dangerous thing is not even, uh, to have the conversation. So that'll be going to legislation for the conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Council member Galumbe.
Yeah, uh, put me in the negative as well. I'm glad that it is going to committee, but I have some of the same concerns that Mr. Scanlon has on. And I think that some of them come down to some legal concerns, uh. Um, in particular, you know, in the city of Buffalo, if we suddenly did, which I'm not even sure if it's legal. But if we had no-knock warrants, um, are we expecting the FBI, are we expecting the state police, you know, other agencies? To follow suit? Um, I hope that this all gets clarified in committee, but my gut feeling is, is that this is a. Is gonna be a non-starter in the city of Buffalo, so I'm in the negative as well.
That's fine. Again, uh, yeah, council member there?
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, we, we spoke at late yesterday in caucus, and, um. I shared my concerns with regards to limiting, limiting a judge's discretion on no-knock warrants. Uh, the level for a judge, I mean, the level, the threshold of evidence for a judge to issue a no-knock warrant is pretty high. Um, you have to have some kind of proof that there's weapons, there's drugs, and. There's a possibility of potential that the weapons can be used, the evidence can be tampered with and destroyed. And for that reason, many times a judge issues the no-knock warrant, so I understand. And there does, it does pose a risk to, to the officers. I've served on narcotics unit and we executed hundreds of search warrants. And there were times we needed the element of surprise when executing it. Not everyone needs a no-knock warrant, and sometimes the judge will tell you no. But it's up to the judge at that point to make that decision. Thank you.
And, and again, uh, so that the public knows, we didn't just vote on no-knock warrants. We voted to send it to a committee for discussion and to look at it and look at the, you know, the legalese of what other areas have done. Um, I think in this time of, uh, especially we talk about reform. Um, that there's gonna be a lot that goes on the table, uh, to be discussed and to be looked at. And hopefully we'd be able to look at these things, um, and not pass judgment until we're able to actually look at them and see. How does it benefit again the public? How does it benefit and keep everyone alive? I mean, my goal for people. Uh, every day is that they go home alive, and my goal for police is that they go home alive. Uh, but one goal that I don't have is to be silent. Next item, council member Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add my name. Like I said, I wanted to be added to this item. I, I wanna look at it, and I said yesterday during caucus, it's right for us to look at. Um, when we talk about reform, it's not gonna be easy, um, but I think we have to be honest about the situations. And when you think about what happened to Breonna Taylor and how they shot at that house, you, those are, those, those things that have been happening. That we haven't addressed, you know, I think about thirty years ago, what happened to Rodney King and where we are still today, Eric Gardner. Um, all these things continue to happen, and so if we don't have these conversations, if we don't revisit. Um, what's currently happening, we're basically saying we're gonna keep going the way we're going, and that's not acceptable. Um, there's a call loud and clear from, um, the, the folks in our country throughout our world that we need to make change. And change is not gonna be easy, but I'm up to the challenge to revisit how we do things and how we can do it better. Um, how we can do it more effectively. Um, we do want our police officers to go home safe, absolutely, and we want our residents to be safe as well. So for me, whatever we do, um, it's about how do we balance that out? How do we make sure our officers know that we support them, we respect them, we need them? And how we let, let our residents know and our protesters know that we hear them, and we're gonna act on what we've heard, because now is the time to make change. We cannot wait three months later, four months later, next year, um, the time is now, and, um, I, I hope that my colleagues understand and. Understand where we're coming from, because not everyone understands the sense of urgency. You know, until you walk in our shoes, you don't understand that. You can empathize or you can kind of understand, but until you're in our shoes, you don't. Some of my colleagues do get it. Some of my colleagues understand very well and can sympathize, so for me, it's about these conversations. Um, making sure we get the information that we need to get to address the legislation that needs to be put forth. To make sure reform happens in a responsible way. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I know before we go to next item, there was a question about the FBI, um, council member Galumbe, just to answer that. We don't regulate the FBI. We don't regulate state police. This is about city, uh, procedures, so. Alrighty.
Item number. Item number sixty-one, Buffalo Police Department Police Review Edition.
So this, this, go ahead.
Go ahead, it was change.
I'm sorry, broke up.
Before the motion, I had a question.
Okay, council member Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you, uh, for acknowledging me. This, this resolution. It, it's requesting that the task force be created. Uh, that was pursuant to a previous item, item twenty-seven zero six. Comprises, uh, it, it, it's made up of representatives from the, uh, police advisory board. And then it's requesting that we add an individual that's appointed by the president of the council. And then representatives of any other relevant departments or agencies as the mayor may deem appropriate. Uh, I'm asking just for a point of clarification here. Is this appointee, uh, someone who the nine of us have agreed on? Or is this something that you're proposing unilateral, uh, authority to make?
Well, it is based on, the language is based on charter. Um, and the, I mean, since I've been here and I can't guarantee any other president would do it this way, most of the time I do consult. Uh, with council members, however, the charter says that the president of the common council is the one that appoints. Um, committees regular or special, so it's based on what the charter says for the position, not for the person.
It was a point of clarification, just making sure that this is what I was reading, so you will be making the decision on your own.
Well, basically, like, I have to make the decisions for committee chairs and, uh, for committees and who goes. So I wouldn't say me, the president of the common council, based on charter does that.
I understand.
Yes, sir, thank you. And that's a good question so that people understand why it's there. Did we, oh, we need a move, a motion.
Is that item sixty?
Sixty-one.
All my numbers are different than what's on my page on my cheat sheet.
Motion to adopt.
Second by council member Fairlau.
Item, item number sixty-two, defunded police.
Question.
Item, uh, council member, uh, Wingo.
Yeah, before we, uh, make a motion on this, I, I, we, we discussed yesterday in council, uh, caucus, uh, Mr. President, that, um. The title of the resolution was, was quite misleading, and we don't want folks to think that. We're sending a resolution to defund the police, being that this is such a vague, uh, expression that's being used lately with. With a myriad of, of different perspectives and interpretations. The spectrum is wide based off of how people perceive defunding the police. So, um, I was asking if, I'm asking you, uh, as the, uh, sponsor of this resolution, i- if we could somehow, some way. Modify the title of this item so that it better reflects what the intent is?
Yeah, so, um, on purpose, it said the words that people are using. And I know that, um, I was talking to a council member earlier, I am okay in modifying the title to reflect that this is the request of people. In some ways, um, what I don't want to do, and I'll tell you why. I don't want to take away the word defund. Now, I don't under. And if people read the resolution, they can. If they're watching by Facebook, they can go to the site and see it. Um, and, uh, maybe if we bring that resolution up on the screen, I think that is very, very important. Because it talks about that there is no universal language, I mean, no universal definition. The reason I put the word defund is because people utilize that. Um, and I felt kind that it would be hypocritical not to use the same wording. Um, that we're being asked whether we agree or not. Um, and I felt like that after having a discussion with someone about the renaming of the street Black Lives Matter. And someone called and said, well, why can't, why can't we just name it All Lives Matter? And I said, because that's not what people are asking. And so at the end of the day, how, how could I, that would be like me putting up, let's name the street of Something Matters. So I, I did utilize the language of the people who are calling for it, but with very. It says right in the resolution that this does not mean, um, I mean, that many areas, and I'm sorry, now the resolution is going up and. Everything, just can, can you leave it right? That, um, this resolution does not commit the council. Uh, to any reallocation or anything, what, what he's highlighting there. So I want to be, and I'm really glad you asked the question. Because I know that at times people are taking and go, the council wants to defund police, and then all you gotta do is read it. This is only a way for those who are utilizing that word or any other word about reallocating dollars. To be able to be in a long-term conversation before the next budget. That is very organized and we know what some of the ideas are. Now, we know there's some people out there who say, get rid of police. I'm, I'm not one of them. I want to, I want to be clear, crystal clear. And very, very, very clear that those who are calling for, for instance, saying. Um, we, we should be adding more mental health workers. I don't think that many people would disagree with that, and even Buffalo police. Who are often called out to situations that are mental health related. You know, there's been a call for how do we utilize more people from within the community, like Stop the Violence Coalition? Which I'd rather see a Stop the Violence member or members like we do see that the administration has done. Uh, on street corners where schools are letting out or neighborhood disputes, so that our police force are able to. Um, concentrate on the areas where they're needed most. Um, so this is, and I want to be very crystal clear. That this is about giving people the opportunity to speak their, and I, you know, I want to see real stuff. You know, here's our suggestion that, you know, we need more of this for the police to be able to do their job better and the public. Uh, to feel, um, that the police are moving into an area of public safety. So what I will say, council member Wingo, is I am open to adding words to that resolution to make that plain. And, uh, would even pause if someone wanted to suggest words, whether you're voting for it or not. I'm okay with that, to make it plain. Um, so, you got verbiage already?
No, I agree with the resolution. I just don't want to, uh, to be miss, 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 want to be misleading. Uh, one word could, I think, totally make this agreeable with everyone if we just say defunding police discussion. Defunding police forum, just adding one word at the end of this, uh, title, I think will make a difference.
And I'm okay with that. So before, so, and I, I don't want to ask my colleague who has some words, because I know. Uh, where it might go, but if he could, it, do you mind sharing? Those words that we talked about earlier that maybe other people would be able to, or no, council member, I ain't gonna call you out, so. I, I didn't get a response, I'll just leave that. There is, I'm okay with, uh, utilizing the words. I, I mean, I think there has to be a different word than discussion, because it is about just receiving information. So we, I, I'm okay with saying defunding information protocol or something like that, so that. Because what is asking council staff is to set up a protocol to receive information, so that we can make a, 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 a good decision next. And if you want a few minutes, we can, we can hold that item in abeyance and come back. So that we can, and I'm, I'm okay with whatever the body wants to do. Anybody?
Let's move forward, let's go.
Councilman Wingo, do you have a word you want to add to it?
And then I. Forum, if we, if we could use forum, I think that's a, a, a great word to use that describes exactly what you are. Are, are saying in the, the resolution.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment, defunding police forum. Thank you, council member Galumbe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna vote no on this, um, because I'm very uncomfortable with the wording. Uh, I support reforming the police department. I would support, uh. Readjusting the allocations of funding that we get for the police department. I agree. That, you know, a lot of what the officers deal with is mental health and other issues that they're, they're not qualified to, uh, to deal with. Um, I am one hundred percent in support of reforming and reforms in the police department. Matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago. I asked council staff to start doing some research on, I believe it's Camden, New Jersey. Camden, New Jersey has a hybrid, um, uh, police department that sort of is defunded, if you will. Um, although I think that's an inappropriate word to use even for that, and it's actually apparently been successful there, but I want to know more. Uh, precise information about that, and so staff has been collecting that information for me. Um, my concern is, is that when we use these terms like defunding, everybody hears something different. Um, you know, we get the people that are calling our office, that are demanding that we defund the police department. I think some of them literally want no police department. Um, they literally want us to live in anarchy. Um, I think there's others that have no idea what they're even talking about, because they say they want the police department defunded. And when I've asked them to be more precise, they really can't get more precise, and I end up usually getting yelled at or screamed at. Um, because, you know, it seems like at this stage right now, it's not about debate, it's not about discussion, it's not about a free. Exchange of ideas, it's about me screaming, being louder, and I'm right, and everybody else is wrong. Um, I mentioned yesterday during caucus that some of the concerns that I have are that, you know, we have Mayor Brown. Uh, putting together and working with a commission right now that I think is legitimate reform for the police department. Um, I believe that his reforms that he's working on are going to be legal. Um, because people don't understand that, like, I'll give you an example. I had people that contacted me. I had people that contacted me and demanded that we fire all of the fifty-seven officers that resigned from the tactical unit. You know, I told them that we can't. They said, yes, you could if you wanted to. There wasn't room for debate, there wasn't room for discussion. It was raising voices and anger. The reality of the situation is, is that there's a lot of legal issues and legal questions and legal concerns, whether it's the teller law, whether it's contracts, whether it's New York State law, whether it's the City of Buffalo Charter, whether it's the contract between the City of Buffalo and the Buffalo Police Department. And there's a lot of other, other legal lease that comes into play. My concern is, is that people are going to see this defund the police, they're going to say, oh, great, the City of Buffalo is going to defund the police. And then when next year rolls along and the changes that are made are going to be the changes in the administration's purview that Mayor Brown is going to be rolling out beginning tomorrow. People are going to be disappointed because they're going to say, look at, you guys lied to us, you are going to defund the police. And I understand, we're explaining this, but we explained over and over that there was never an added twenty million dollars to the police budget. I still have people telling me that, you know, you funded the police with that extra money that could have gone to whatever. And it's not about facts, it's not about figures right now, it's about emotions. And I think that we need to, you know, look at realistic and legitimate reforms. And once again, that's why I support much of what Mayor Brown is doing because he's looking at it from every standpoint. And my concern is, is that this and other committees that we put together are going to end up being sounding boards for people that are going to be angry at the things that can't be done and are not going to listen to the reasons why they can't be done. I mean, once again, you know, the, the last thing I'll just mention is, is that people attacked us and the mayor for not giving Karielle Horne her pension. We can't. I was told by someone, if you wanted to, you could. I can't. It's outside of the purview of my, uh, uh, office. The mayor can't do that. It has to be done in Albany. But people are not listening right now, people are not looking for debate and a free exchange of ideas. So I'm very concerned about that title of unfunded, uh, defunding in the police department. So I'm going to know on this.
Thank you. And before I go to Councilmember Scanlon, I just want to respond that I'm very supportive of the mayor's efforts. But I do believe that city councils, and this came out of the governor's mouth in one of his last daily briefings, we still have a responsibility. And at the end of the day, we are lawmakers. And so if we don't know something, we need to find out. I understand that you don't want to be the sounding board. I do want to be the sounding board. I do want to hear what people feel. I do want to hear what people think. Because it's those people, whether I agree with them, whether I disagree with them, whether I agree with their words, I'm not going to take their words, turn it around to make me feel comfortable because at the end of the day, this is an uncomfortable situation as it is supposed to be. Because there's never a change without some agitation, without some feeling of, I feel uncomfortable with a word. But what it is asking, and this is the same thing that when I talk about Black Lives Matter, some people want to tell you this is not the right word without even hearing, without even listening of what people, what is the definition for locally? I've been clear and people, regardless of whether there was a resolution for a fraud, people are going to take it whatever they, they want to. But if you read the resolution and the reason that I just put it up, if you read it, it's not talking about getting rid of police forces. It is simply talking about one thing that I feel that at times people don't want to do, and that is listen. At least listen, or else then you do get an organized effort that says, you didn't even hear us, you didn't even, you didn't even take the time to listen to what the definitions were. And so I was tempted to change the word to make people feel comfortable, but I don't think that this is a time of feeling comfortable. And what I don't want is to look outside of my fourteenth floor window, thirteenth floor window, and to see people back outside saying, well, they waited on, they waited on the mayor. No, the mayor's doing a good job. I'm fine with that. But it doesn't mean that at, at this stage in the game, when we are promising reform, when we are listening to one of the biggest movements in my time of being elected and many of our times, that we sit around and go, well, hopefully the committee will be together. No, we've asked for a task force. So any other committee is not what the council asked for. And we, at the reason I asked that someone from the council be appointed is so that we can ensure that we have a voice, that we can ensure that before these things go forward, that we have vetted these things up, um, and that we are not just waiting on a press conference. Let me be clear, what I'm learning right now, I learned from the press conference. I don't want to learn about where we're going with police reform, one of the biggest issues that is in front of us right now by a press conference. I want to learn of it because I was a part of the process and that we did our job. Councilmember Gomondet. Councilmember Scanlon? Did you ask to be recognized?
Council President, uh, Councilmember Scanlon did ask to be recognized, but he's having audio difficulties. And he asked that I make sure that he's recorded and the negative for item sixty-two.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Wyatt, did you have your hand up? Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fearlet was next.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to address this, when, what this actual resolution is doing when you're, when it's read, it's having the council staff create a system to collect and compile ideas from stakeholders and their ideas for the budget and giving those to the mayor and to the council on a monthly basis. So I think everyone on that council would agree, it's good to get input from residents and distribute that to the council and the mayor on a monthly basis. I understand what my colleagues are saying about defining a word. Some people say the word defund the police means abolish the police and get rid of the resources. Uh, other people say defunding the police means that looking at reallocating resources and it's a completely separate, and it does not mean abolishing the police. So I understand different people have definite, different definitions, but the, what this resolution does specifically, regardless of the title or what's in the whereas clause, it specifically has an official process for residents and stakeholders to submit ideas to get to the mayor, into the council on a monthly basis, which I, I certainly support that process. I also think, since we're talking about processes in the city's upcoming operating, operating budget, I think it's important for us, after resources, to have some sort of public meetings, engagement, hearings on the actual budget process. Because what I've heard from a lot of people is this was the first time they really got in the weeds and the details of the budget process. They didn't, they would like to know more information on how to read the budget. When's the budget proposed? What is the mayor control? What does the council control? Can the council take money from one place and put it to another? Can the council add this? So I think we should certainly expand on that and address that in the future, possibly after recess, we could add some sort of hearings, whether it's a budget one-on-one workshop or any type of education process on the budget because we want to make sure that people's comments are going to the appropriate places and that there's a, an understanding for the full process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alrighty, um, motion? Councilmember Revere, you're on mute, sir. Councilmember Revere, you're on mute.
A motion to, uh, adopt as amended?
Yes, as amended with the title change. Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number sixty-three, duty to intervene law.
Motion to adopt items sixty-three and sixty-four.
No, item sixty-three would be just to adopt the resolves and send the remainder to legislation where we can follow up with what Corporation Council will provide.
About the resolves remainder to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt? Next up?
Item number sixty-four, naming a roadway in honor of Black Lives Matter.
Motion to adopt.
Uh, I believe this would have to go to committee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, this would be to adopt, send the remainder to, um, where do we normally send it, CD?
To legislation.
To legislation, send the remainder to legislation.
About the resolves remainder to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wingo. And on this item, and I'll come to Councilmember Wyatt. On this item, this was a request from the young man who did the pledge today. He put his request, him and his friends wanted to be, uh, involved. They, uh, some of their parents wouldn't let them come down, uh, to some of the rallies, I was told. And they worked on what they could do. You know, right away, and I said this earlier in my earlier discussion, you know, people, I did have people call, and I'm okay with that. I think you make a decision, you, you pick a side. And at the end of the day, when, when he said Black Lives Matter, we know all over the country there are streets being named or renamed or honored to commemorate a moment where someone say, what's the difference? Why would you do it? Well, the same reason that we remember the Woolworths, uh, where people, um, sat at a chair and, and we remember a movement. So I do want to commend this young man, and for those who call and say, why aren't we naming it All Stri-, All, All Lives Matter? You do that. Put in the resolution. Do it. But again, hear what people are saying. And there are people all over this world, this isn't just Buffalo, and, uh, that, that are, that are in the movement of saying, let's change things for the better. So I do commend, uh, this young man, um, and thank you, council, uh, for your support. Did I put a second on, we already put a second on that. And Councilmember Wyatt does the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to, uh, salute Makai as well. He was on the radio show on last Friday, very well-spoken young man. He actually attends Olmstead, which is in the University District.
We know.
But I'm, I'm real excited about young people who want to get involved, and this is their opportunity. And so I hope young people who are paying attention and watching right now will use their voice and be able to articulate their viewpoint and even gather young people together to have them be a part of this, because this is the time for them to be engaged, to be getting themselves prepared for our seats in the future. Um, because we want to see more young people involved, and this is their opportunity. So a salute to Makai and his friends. He even talked about the difference, differences of their conversation. But that's what this is about. It's about negotiating and navigating through those opinions because that's what this is, that's what the real life, real world is about, navigating through those, um, opinions to really get to a consensus. And I just thank him for stepping up and see, wanting to see this through. He's become an overnight celebrity. And I'm very proud of for our young people to be seen in a positive light because so many times you look at them as negative. But he's a shining star and he's from the University District. Thank you.
And prior to this, Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. Um, listen, uh, the resolution, uh, wonderful. So great minds think alike. In some instances, this, this here resolution was written on, on, on the eleventh. I had began a poll of the, uh, community on Facebook on the tenth. So really, myself, Makai, and you are all on the same page as it relates to making sure that we memorialize this moment in history. I'm, I'm asking if it's okay with you and Makai, if we could utilize the information that was, that has already been compiled, uh, from that Facebook polling to kind of help us determine what street should be designated, uh, as Black Lives Matter way.
Let, let's add, I'm okay with adding that to it. Um, he's going to do a whole process with his, with his youth because, and that's a really good point, um, because the, the resolution doesn't call for it to be an elicit. I would love for it to be, but, but it needs to just be in the right place. And I really sincerely don't care what district it goes in. Um, I'm just so, I'm really so proud of him and his colleagues. So, you know, if it ends up in, I don't know, uh, North Buffalo or something like that, we'll be okay. But it needs to be at a place, uh, that, that really brings the movement and the, the reason for the movement to life. So please submit those, but I'm really putting him to work, uh, this summer, uh, to put together so that we can collect that data. Because I don't know, you know, if it came off of your Facebook, it's probably leaning pretty heavily to Mastin.
Well, I, I can't, I can't say that's why it's leaving, leaning heavily towards Mastin, but I do have some initial, uh, data that we can absolutely share. We had over four hundred participants, ninety-nine percent all agree that we ought to move forward with this. So I am extremely grateful. We're going to put it in Delaware District.
Thank you, there, Councilmember Wyatt.
Can you, can you add me to the resolution?
Add Councilmember Wyatt to the resolution.
And, and add me too, add me too.
Add Councilmember Wingo to the resolution, absolutely. All right. Anybody else on this? All right, did we, we already took the first and second, right?
Yes.
All right, item's moved. Thank you, councilmembers. And note, by the way, public, it was unanimously approved. Thank you.
Item number sixty-five, Police Advisory Board Reform Recommendations.
Motion to adopt the resolves, the remainder to police oversight.
And these are just items that the police oversight, uh, committee submitted. They will go back to them and also to the task force, um, so that we, um, are going in some type of flow. I just want to make sure that the task force, uh, meets, um, and that those recommendations from them, uh, will be considered. Councilmember Wyatt?
Um, do we have any idea when that task force will be assembled and seated to begin meeting?
We don't. In all fairness, I haven't asked. I really wanted, uh, to add the council, uh, representative to that to make sure that we did have somebody at the table from the council.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right.
Council President?
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yeah, I apologize. I was having some serious technical difficulties. I'm just, I'm not even sure what item we're on right now. I finally got back into it.
We are now on the advisory board's recommendations.
Okay. And, um, did our chief of staff indicate that I wanted to be recorded, the negative on item number sixty-two?
Yes, he did. You have been recorded in the.
All right. Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
Glad to have you back with us.
Thank you.
Did we get a first and second? Did I do that?
No, not on number five.
All right. Motion? Councilmember Revere?
We're on, uh, motion to adopt, we're on sixty-five?
Yep. Motion was, oh, you did do that. Motion to adopt, send the remainder to police oversight. And can you also add to send to the task force? Second by Councilmember Fearlet.
Thank you. Item number sixty-six, analysis at a Buffalo Police Department Crisis Intervention Team.
Motion to adopt items sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight.
I think six, is sixty-six, um, I think the council member wanted to adopt the resolves and send the remainder, is that correct?
The police oversight, yes.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
And I also want to say, uh, that I appreciate you sending this expeditiously to, uh, BPD so that they can compile this information for, uh, whatever information is available so that we're not being, uh, uh, duplicating, uh, services.
Absolutely.
In turn that they got that information.
Yeah, that's, that's a good resolution to find that information out. Thank you. Next item?
Item number sixty-seven.
Chief of Staff, you had your finger up?
Yes, sir. And, uh, the majority leader did that in a batch that touched on sixty-eight. Not sure if Councilmember Scanlon's audio was fully resolved. He wanted to note on that one as well.
Malcolm, we didn't get to that, so we had to go back to the remainder, so I'm going back to.
Just on the one item.
Yeah.
Next item?
Item number sixty-seven, Commissioner Beetz.
Motion to adopt sixty-seven and sixty-eight. Motion for that item sixty-seven.
No, we just did sixty-five, sixty-six we did and adopted and sent the remainder. So we are on sixty-seven, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so motion was, give the motion again, sir?
Motion is to adopt.
Sixty-seven and, or just sixty-seven?
That's sixty-seven.
All right, second by Councilmember Wingo. Next item?
Item number sixty-eight, Establishment of Ci- Citizens Review Board.
Motion to adopt the resolves, remainder to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt, um, and who has the floor, and then Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I know that we had a long conversation in caucus about this item. And, um, I know I've gotten some information that Rochester struck theirs down. Well, a portion of it down, um, but I, I, I won't be moved. Um, I think that this is extremely important legislation. Some of the information that I've been getting as far as the Internal Affairs Unit of the Police Department and their percentage of ruling in favor of police speaks volumes. I can't say if it's true or false, the only thing that I can say is that there's nothing that's perfection. I know when I worked in the private sector, um, there were many times that we had issues go through a legal process and I can tell you that nothing was a hundred percent. It was pretty much maybe sixty-five, seventy-five, but ninety-five percent. So I think that this is what reform- So I think that this is what reform looks like. That we've been hearing this this loud and clear call for police reform. And a large portion of that has to have public input. I know that there are groups that resist public input. I know that people are concerned about the type of people we may get on this, but I think that when you well, you can put it well, you can put it together very well. I mean, you can do background checks just like the police do on police officers, and we see that that's still not perfect. But again, we can put forth the process. I think the, my intent on this is to make certain that again, we, that the community hears us loud and clear, that we hear them. And that there's a process put in place to again, give them confidence that their voice is not being ignored, that there's a process that is for justice for all, not just for some. And I think that this is critically important. I think that all that we do, this is one of the critical things that people constantly complain about, is that when they go to internal affairs, they don't feel that they're heard, that there's, they don't feel it's a fair process. I think some years ago, I asked for information for the details behind the number of cases heard and all those things, and that information has never come forward. So again, I think this is something that's very essential. I know that we've heard that it was a portion of it was struck down in Rochester. But again, there's still these citizens review boards throughout the country. So just because one city hasn't done something doesn't mean that we step back and say, oh, we're stuck. That means that as lawmakers who do the research and do our homework and figure out what we need to do to overcome that barrier. Because again, I think that this can be something that strengthens our relationship with the community. I think it will strengthen the relationship with the police department. And I think it will strengthen the relationship with them lawmakers, because this is a joint effort. I've said very openly, I trust, I believe in the police. We need police, but I want good police, and I think there needs to be a process. One of the things that we have not examined is the number, how the police hire their their officers. Nobody's talked about that. But again, when you start looking at the process and the institute the systematic racism that takes place, all these things are on the table, and all these things must be reviewed. And I think it can be reviewed with people who have goodwill. I don't think everybody's out to get the police. I think some people will make them think that, but I don't think that everybody is. I think people want justice and they want fairness. And I think that we can do that in this in this type of unit, so I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful for my, some of my colleagues' support, but if you don't, it's okay, because I think that at the end of the day, this is not a sprint, it's a marathon, and I think that we're going to make sure that the people who have asked for this, who have demanded for this. So like again, 30 years ago, when Rodney King was bludgeoned, there has not really been effective change, and I think the time is now. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member Scanlon?
Thank you, council president. I think council member Wyatt is correct when he talks about the fact that we have to have an open and honest conversation with the public, and not just our body, but also the police department as well. I think the open lines of communication between the public and our police department are essential to overcoming any issues within our law enforcement agencies that exist right now and creating fair, again, law enforcement agencies for everyone. And he hit the nail on the head when he referenced the Internal Affairs Department of the Buffalo Police Department and its need for overhaul. I'm not sure how many of my colleagues are aware of this, but it's my understanding that the Internal Affairs Division of the Buffalo Police Department, which is an investigatory body, or investigatory division, does not have one detective within it. Not one member of its, this is my understanding, that not one member of that unit has gone through the detective training and is actually a detective within the department. That there are lieutenants and things of that nature, but there are no detectives within that department, which is, which I found pretty shocking and pretty upsetting. That you don't have the people put in place with the the training and the talent and the background to investigate the things they need to. So I think he absolutely hit the nail on the head there. My concern with this is that we have our council's police oversight committee. We have the council, the the police advisory board. That we had an item, a couple items earlier that referenced the task force that's being put together to discuss police reforms as well. We have the Commission on Citizens Rights, which I think needs to be bulked up and strengthened through our budget process as well. I think we need to give that a commission, more teeth. So my fear is that if we create another board, that they're kind of going to be jumping over one another to get things done. Instead of getting, putting together one or two boards that are going to effectively look at this, the these things, bring us reforms, engage with the public and bring information to the council. So my concern with this is that just the creation of another board along, that we already kind of have some in existence, that I think we, what I, like I said, we need to be bulking up and investing dollars in to give them more teeth. And again, looking at internal affairs and an overhaul there, things of that nature. So for that reason, I just, I don't feel like we need to create another board. But I absolutely am in favor of that open dialogue and that all those open lines of communication between the public, because if we're not having those, what are we even doing? There's, we're not going to get anywhere, we're not going to get anything done meaningful if we're not having those open and honest conversations with the public. So I I look forward to working on reform and all these things through the avenues we have, the mechanisms that we have, and strengthening them with my colleagues. But I don't feel like we need to add another board, so I would be in the negative towards creating another addition, additional board.
Got you. We're recording a negative. Just on that, now coming around, some of the other boards that are there are not for the same purpose. So when you talk about the advisory board, which was created before most of us were on the council, it is to advise the council, so that's totally different. You talk about, I think the two that are similar and that this council may need to look at and talk about, and some of them can't be just easily removed, because it would take away power from an area. But for instance, like you brought up the Commission of Citizens Rights. If that body is actually functioning at that level and doing it, I think that becomes a part of the conversation. I have a resolution that is being finished right now that asks for the report that we're supposed to get every year. And I think by being able to see, how many cases have they seen in the last year? How many things have been resolved? To be able to look at and say, do we need a new mechanism? And start collapsing some of these other mechanisms, I think are important. I agree with you, council member Scanlon. We need to look at them, but I'm not afraid to look, so thank you. Thank you. Council members, one had their hand up?
Council president, just one quick thing, you know, and we've talked about this in the past on the council. And I think one thing that we, that everyone involved has kind of failed on is getting information out on the Commission on Citizens Rights. I think everyone can do a better job, myself included, on getting that information out to the public, because I don't think a lot of people know it exists and can be their benefit. So I think we all work together to absolutely get that information out to people.
And they have had great leadership. I just got to say that, you know, people who really are concerned, even the current person who's there, very concerned about community. And so we want to know what what exactly has their year been like to? Council member Rivera had his hand up.
Thank you very much. Yesterday, we asked Corporation Council to gather some information with regards to the Citizens Review Board, whether or not it infringes, if the council can in itself establish a Citizens Review Board, because it may infringe on the powers of the executive branch. It is the mayor's purview through the commissioner to run his department. We're strictly advisory. Even the police oversight is advisory. The committee, the the advisory committee itself is advisory. So there was a question regarding whether it was contractual, whether or not the common council could do this through an ordinance or through a referendum. We weren't clear. We asked Corporation Council to. So I don't know if, I mean, this was just yesterday, by the way.
Right. I I cannot suggest, because this, we are not voting on whether we're doing this. We're sending it to committee. That way we have a chance to get the information and not just get it on the fly from Corporation Council. Would you be okay with that?
Yeah, we're okay, but just to make the point that people are coming to us to be heard. And all we're doing is giving them an audience at this point. We're not making any determinations. We're saying, hey, we're here you loud and clearly. You'll have a chance to come before the common council and to present your case. We may not agree with it at some point. Or we may, but at least they'll be heard, and I think that's important that we give them an audience and not form an opinion too soon. Who knows? I may be off on this at some point. But I want to give them an opportunity to come and be heard, and I agree with you, and allowing them an opportunity to come in and be heard.
Yeah, I think that's, and that's why it's going to legislation. There'll probably be other council members who will bring something forward. But I want to be clear, you know, after people are heard, they want to see action. And they want to see something change, because anybody can listen to a choir, but not everybody gets saved. So at the end of the day, there has to be some change that comes out of that hearing. Who else had their hand up? Did anybody else have their hand up? Council member Gullumbe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with much of what Mr. Scanlon said. I think that we do have the other committees and commissions that are on the books. And I I'm concerned about adding another one to them. I would also agree with much of what everybody said about the Citizens Rights Commission, that I would like to see them, people understand what it is that they actually do, what their position is in the city of Buffalo. And, you know, give them some more teeth. You know, basically, what happens is is that I think that people, as you mentioned, get frustrated because they feel that there's been a lot of talk and that there's been no action. Let me give you one just quick example. I was talking to some constituents over the past week. You know, we used to have a serious problem in the city of Buffalo with dogs being killed during police raids. Think about that. Three, four years ago, it was almost a weekly occurrence, you know, that a dog was being killed. That was something that animal rights activists contacted my office about. We worked with, I think it was Commissioner Duranda, Detective Kefner, the Buffalo Police Department, the mayor's office, and it's been three years since the last time that there's been a dog that's been killed. Because they now have a individual that goes along with them that is a police officer, but is an animal officer as well. And her job is to stop the dogs from charging the officers. That was sort of done quietly. It was sort of done behind the scenes, partially because I'm not good at, you know, doing press releases and saying, hey, look at what we did. But those are the little things that we've been working on that have been accomplishing over the past several years. There was no committee that was involved with that, and you know, I'm just, I I'm just concerned that people are going to get frustrated with another committee, another commission, when we have organizations that could do these jobs and get the information out there, so I would be on the negative as well. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Did I give a second to that? Get into discussion, I forget what I've done. No seconds to that? Did you already make, was the motion already made? Well, let's make it anyway, even if you did. Council member Rivera? Council member?
Motion was to adopt the resolves, remainder to legislation.
Second by council member Wyatt. And two, I recorded in the negative.
Item number 69, Transfer of Funds for Fruit Belt Sub and Vision Design.
Motion to approve.
Second by council member Wyatt.
Mr. Chairman, can we revisit item number 16?
But I'm just going to do a roll call on the last approval. Okay, council member Bowman? Council member Farrelletto? Council member Gullumbe?
Which item? Which item is this?
This is the transfer of funds for the Fruit Belt. It's approved.
Yes, yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council member Rivera, can we do revisitations at the end, so we don't get, now, just remind me? Next item?
President, we are at the end.
Oh. I'm waiting for the committees. All right, council member Rivera, which item?
Revisit item number 16.
All righty. Motion to revisit item number 16, second by council member Noakowski. So item is before us. Deficiency note called item?
Back up.
Item number 16, deficiency note resolution.
This is before us.
Yeah, this is time sensitive. This needs to be approved today. It makes a correction to spending note that we approved last week from the original 12 months to 18 months.
And and I apologize, because the chief of staff did, I didn't know we sent it to committee. I missed it. Council member Wyatt?
This is 18 million? This is it?
This is what we approved the last, whenever we had the special meeting. But it it read 12 months instead of 18 months. Yes, yes, and I apologize.
Motion to approve, yeah.
All right, we have to resent, what what did we do with the last motion?
It was going to finance, but council members, it's not an approval, it's an adopt, so just when you make it.
All right, so motion, let's first rescind. The motion to send to legislation is where you sent it to finance. So rescinding to send the the motion to send to finance, second by council member Wyatt. And now the motion is to adopt. Second by council member Wyatt. Thank you for that catch. Because we'd had to have a special meeting, which I don't think anybody wants to have another special meeting. All right, is that the entire agenda? Announcements?
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc. Special committees, police oversight is Thursday, June 25, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. Regular committees, committee on civil service is Tuesday, June 30, 2020 at 9:45 a.m. Committee on Finance, follow on civil service is Tuesday, June 30, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. Committee on Legislation is Tuesday, June 30 at 1:00 p.m. And Committee on Community Development is Tuesday, June 30, 2020 at 2:00 p.m.
So all of our committees are going back into their normal schedules so that we can try to clean up as much of the committees before our August recess. So these might be a little lengthy on Tuesday. The public can comment live, or they can comment in advance. And I'll yield to the chief of staff, we encourage the public to comment on any items that will be open and in advance, so that we can have that information. Chief of Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Council President, and first to council member Scanlon's note for the police oversight meeting, which is happening Thursday on Facebook via Zoom, the comment period for that has been extended. If you would like to comment on the items that are already in police oversight or that are being sent there based on today's actions from the full council session, then please email us at councilstaff@city-buffalo.com. You can also call in and actually leave a voicemail of your message, and we will transcribe that for the meeting. That number is 716-851-5105. These will be the same methods that you can use to comment in advance for any other committees scheduled for the next upcoming weeks, that you can email us or call in advance. They will all be broadcast live on Facebook, uploaded later to our web portal and YouTube.
All righty, council members, announcements for your districts. Council member Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maston District has been facilitating COVID-19 testing. We've been doing this every Thursday for the last few weeks. This week, if you have not been tested yet, we will be at 60 Headley. That is right off Jefferson, right near Cunyessus College. 60 Headley, right off Jefferson, at 10:00 a.m. That'll be the Rock Family Medicine is coming out to do more testing. If I got tested, please get tested so we know where you are. As far as the antibody test, you have to get that done at your doctor's office or somewhere else where they draw blood. Other than that, we're trying to make sure that everyone knows that if you think you've been exposed, get get tested, please, because we are in our second spike of our first wave. So we are really trying to remain diligent in ensuring that we know where the viruses are and engaged in contact tracing. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for that announcement. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Council member Wyatt?
I'm just going to put out there, tentatively, we're looking at a virtual E-District Police Meeting on July 1st. I want to make sure that if I can get council member Bowman and Wingo, because they're part of E-District to participate as well, we'll put out a flyer, let people know. Because we know there's a lot of concerns throughout the city regarding firecrackers and SUVs, well, ATVs. Maybe we just want to have a meeting. We haven't had one since, I believe, April. So we're planning on a July 1st, next this, next Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. And if you can give me your information, we'll make sure that you're a part of it as well. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, any other announcements? All right, council, council member Rivera?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by council member Gullumbe. We stand adjourned. Thank you.